Think I could ever do. She just had a heart for that work. And so, I grew up watching that. She passed away in 2013, but she had many, many, many friends in the district. And I really, I think, went into education because of just watching her do the work that she did and the love for children. And, you know, she didn't have hardly a high school diploma. She barely had a high school diploma, didn't have a college degree, so she couldn't be a teacher. But I was inspired by her. And so, I just want to thank all of the paraprofessionals and the teachers who show up every day, that are doing the work. That's really important. It's a hard work. It's filled with grace and mercy and compassion and love, but they're showing up every day. And so, thank you, teachers, and thank our paraprofessionals for all that you do for our students.
Any other board members? Board member Willie?
Yeah, too, as a former teacher, just my heart sings every time we get to celebrate our teachers. And every time this happens, I try to shout out three teachers, and I'm going to continue to do that same thing. Ms. Ward and Ms. McDaniel, who I wouldn't have survived as a teacher without them. And I think teachers, yes, do amazing job for our students, but they also support each other to continue in the work. And I have to shout out my mother, who's a 30-year second-grade teacher. And she's no longer teaching now. She's retired. But I always have to shout her out because I really don't think I would be in this seat or would have been in education without her. And last, I'll just shout out all of my kids. I have three kids who are all in our schools. And just shout out to all of their teachers, too. The work that they put in every single day to pour into my kids and everybody else's kids in those classrooms is just immense. So, I just want to thank them for that.
All right.
Yeah, I just want to also thank the teachers. I think all of us can reflect on a teacher or two or three who changed our lives for the better. And it's difficult work. It's more challenging today than it's ever been. And in spite of the teaching shortage that we experience in Duval County throughout this nation, we just need to embrace, honor, and respect our teachers. And I just want to thank them for what they do every day with our students.
And as we transition to the next item, I'll leave you with a challenge for everyone in this room and everyone watching. For those teachers that you know in your world, whether they're your neighbors, whether they're your family, whether they're your friends, please take the time this week to thank them for what they do. It's been a difficult time these last few years, and yet, we still have them showing up every day to do the good work with our children. So, please make sure you take the time to celebrate them this week. We'll move on to our mental health proclamation. Whereas, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being; and whereas, all Americans face challenges in life that can impact their mental health; and whereas, prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions; and whereas, there are practical tools that all people can use to improve their mental health and increase their resiliency; and whereas, mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation; and whereas, with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives; and whereas, each business school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen has the capacity to help reduce the stigma around mental health treatment and benefit from the promotion of mental health wellness. Now, therefore, we, the School Board of Duval County School District in Florida, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Mental Health Month within and throughout Duval County public schools. And we call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Duval County to commit our community to increasing awareness and also understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. And with that, I'll see if we have any board members that would like to speak to that item as well. Okay? All right. We're good. All right. We will move on now. We'll bring up Ms. Vicky Gutierrez, and she will lead us through our recognitions. And we have a room full tonight.
From school supplies to generous donations, we begin our recognitions by honoring a longtime partner of DCPS, Office Depot Office Max. For several years, Office Depot Office Max provided drawstring bags filled with school supplies to several of our Title I schools. They now host an annual school supply drive, also benefiting Title I schools. Each year, funds are raised to provide one school with e-gift cards to purchase whatever they need for their classrooms and school. Past donations include $17,000 to Charger Academy and $28,000 to Timmerquon Elementary. Most recently, Office Depot Office Max donated just over $32,000 to Hidden Oaks Elementary. You can see the check for yourself. Principal Polly Dorr treated her teachers to a VIP shopping experience at their Ramona Boulevard store, where they were able to purchase classroom equipment, school supplies, and student incentives. Principal Polly Dorr is here to help honor them, along with our Executive Director of Family and Community Engagement, Brandon Mack. And joining us from Office Depot Office Max are General Managers Terry Hicks and Janice Lane. Please help us honor this amazing partner. It's a program so successful, even the governor's office has taken notice. We're speaking of the Speech and Debate Program at Wolfson School for Advanced Studies and Leadership, and tonight, we recognize its coach and two students. Students Will Waller and Victoria Ralova participated in the Florida Civics and Debate Initiative 2023 Day on April 4th at the State Capitol. This was an all-expenses-paid, invitation-only event for the top-performing FCDI programs and students. In fact, a letter from the governor's office stated this: "Your Speech and Debate Program has been extremely successful, and that is a testament to your hard work." They got to tour the historic Capitol, meet lawmakers, and participate in a mock legislative session. Now, this program is led by Ms. Melissa Lojour, who we also wish to recognize. She built the Speech and Debate Program from scratch, and it's because of her dedication to her craft and the success of her students that she was recently named the Northeast Florida Speech and Debate Coach of the Year. Tonight, all three are receiving a superintendent's coin of excellence, and they're joined by Principal Chris Begley. Please join us in congratulating these students and their coach for their success. We will now celebrate a group of Team Duval students selected as National Merit Scholarship finalists. They represent the top 1% of the estimated 1.5 million high school students who enter the scholarship program each year. We're going to recognize these students by school, and each will also receive a superintendent's coin of excellence. We begin with Principal Royce Turner, here to help us recognize the finalists from Paxton School for Advanced Studies.
I'm proud to present to you all Mr. Tony Thomas.
Next, Principal Dean Ledford will join us to recognize finalists from Duncan Fletcher High School.
Thank you very much. Our first one up, Patrick Byrd. Patrick wants to say, "Go Gators." Next one, Matthew Mars, FIU. And our next, Senator Grant Tucker, Princeton.
And now, Principal Begley will join us to recognize finalists from Samuel Wolfson High School.
Thank you very much. Go Pack. We have three that we want to recognize. We're going to start off with Campbell Sher. She is going to University of Florida. We have Cameron Day, and he is going to the Air Force Academy. And last but not least, we have Charlotte Cackam, and she is going to Harvard.
Last but not least, Principal Majowa will help us recognize finalists from Stanton College Preparatory School.
Okay, I'm going to call Melan Alex, Ryan Alsagar, Funzi Chen, Maxin Chua, Elijah Colanges, Antonio De Guzman, Param Gattupalli, Amit Gupta, Stanley Huang, Mary Kim, Madeline Lee, Sophia Laura, Nehita Madam, Catherine McCoy, Anisha Mama Reddy, Snehe Patel, Emily Pritchett, Prithvi Radakrishnan, Dante Rachef, Jason Tran, Anna Wheeler, Abhinav Yaragunta, and Siri Yarapadni, and those are my babies.
The Duval County Public Schools Nutrition Program partners with Chartwell's K-12 and Thompson Hospitality to provide food service management and serve meals in our cafeterias district-wide. As a way to give back to the students they serve, DCPS seniors are invited each year to apply for scholarships. These include a one-time $5,000 scholarship for 20 seniors who plan to continue post-secondary education, as well as a one-time meal plan scholarship for seniors who plan to continue their education at a historically black college and university with food service provided by Thompson Hospitality. Tonight, we recognize a total of 22 outstanding soon-to-be graduates and scholarship winners, and they will be joined by representatives from Chartwell's K-12. And by school, these recipients are, from Andrew Jackson, Cameron Duncan; from Atlantic Coast High School, Milan Stavnavich and Adrian Williams; from Darnell Cookman School of the Medical Arts, Joseph Dorsey II; from Douglas Anderson School of the Arts, Lucas Lowry; from Duncan Fletcher High School, Aubrey Dawkins; from Inglewood High School, Nicholas Hicks; from First Coast High School, Anaya Berry; from Frank H. Peterson Academies of Technology, Brianna Hilliard; from Jean Rebeau High School, Shamaria Jordan; from Mandarin High School, Michael Stevens; from Paxton School for Advanced Studies, Nissa Phillip and Saran Hatcher II; from Riverside High School, Ethan Tox; from Samuel Wolfson, Ryan Moy and Paige Pearson; from Sandalwood High School, Bridget Baskin and Zion McCall; from Stanton, Michael Chow and Tatum Register; from Westside High School, Jamie Vivas; and finally, from William Raines High School, Sierra Buckner. Congratulations. Students and staff call it a dream come true. For our final presentation, we honor River City Science Academy's Middle School Science Olympiad Team for earning the top spot in a state competition. In March, RCSA Science Olympiad Teams participated in the Florida State Science Olympiad Tournament, which was held at the University of Florida in Gainesville. After months of hard work, the middle school team, the RCSA Rockets, placed first among 36 teams. They not only became state champions, but they also made it to nationals for the fourth time in school history. The team will now go on to represent Florida at the national tournament at Wichita State University in Kansas. That competition will take place on May 20th, and here are the team members. Abigail Soto, Celia Avdik, Maddox Hoffrichter, Danica Sullivan, Cyril Gildeur, Julie Marlowe, Van Moda, Jamari Nagron, Joshua Nagron, Sebastian Moskara, David N., Deshaun Hedley, Zion Deguo, Yash Nair, and Rishi Kanti Mahatney. And we also commend the team's teacher and parent-coaches. Please join us in congratulating the RCSA Rockets on their success.
All right. While they file out, can we give one more round of applause for River City, that's last presentation? What a great night. We are going to move on to the approval of the May 2nd, 2023 Agenda. That the Duval County School Board approved the May 2nd, 2023 Agenda as submitted on April 25th, 2023 with the following changes. Approval of minutes, April 26, 2023. Special Board Meeting, item added. Academic Services, Amendment to Agreement with Varsity Tutors for Schools LLC Pulled for Discussion, Coker. Superintendent's Travel, Item Withdrawn. Finance, School District Five-Year Capital Plan, 2022-2023 through 2026-2027. Attachment was amended. I'm going to ask for a motion.
So, move.
Second.
I have a motion by Board Member Hershey and a second by Board Member Jones. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for your vote. That item passes seven to zero. We're now going to move on to the Board Chair Report, as we hear lots of clinging of medallions on the way out. It's a good noise in this room, very good noise. All right. So, this month, for our Board Chair Report, I want to start with just an update to the public in regard to Douglas Anderson and the third-party investigation. Last week, our Board held a special meeting in order to address hiring of third-party counsel. And as illustrated here, safety and well-being of our students remains our top priority. And due to recent events in our school district, our Board has hired a third-party investigative firm to look at the following items. And just wanted to make the public aware of the scope of this work. Actions at the school or district level which allowed Jeffrey Clayton to remain in the classroom after multiple incidents resulting in disciplinary action by DCPS Office of Professional Standards over a period of years. Actions at the district level which recently resulted in 50 teacher investigative files, some of which date back to 2020, being transmitted to the Florida Department of Education Professional Practices Office a week ago. And just a reminder that our Board remains committed to further dialogue as it relates to the implementation status of contracts associated with school safety, particularly the hiring of this third-party investigative group. This past month, as you know, each month, we try to bring in one of our nonprofit partners to talk to the community and to our Board about the work. And this month was I'm a Star Foundation, and I'm a Star stands for Smart, Talented, and Resilient. I will say, a former Board Member and Board Chair, Betty Bernie, leads this organization. And she had an incredible presentation for us, and they talked about their Let's Move campaign, their Teen Mental Health Kits, which they actually presented at one of our Board meetings about a year ago. Girl Talk, the impact of the first female vice president is a program that they worked through. They're also very involved and have a Gear Up program. They provide after-school program. And one of the things they have done since the beginning of their inception is helping the homeless and raising money for our homeless students in regards to clothing, food, transportation, and such. And it's something, again, that they've done since the inception of the I'm a Star Foundation. I will say, these are two of the items that we looked at. There was some video in regards to mental health toolkits. And again, one of their big campaigns is about Let's Move Jacksonville, and it is truly meant to help get our community motivated and in a healthier space. And we thank the children that are involved in that. And again, a big shout-out to Betty Bernie for her work with this, and the fact that that program has grown, the way it has, shows just how good it is for our community. We were, as always, lots of Board activities going on. We attended, a group of us attended Consortium State School Boards in Tampa. A number of us have attended District Materials Review Committee meetings. I didn't send pictures of that, needless to say. We had our JPEF Joint Board Meeting. Thank you to the members that attended that. Chaffey Trail Middle School Groundbreaking, in just a second, we'll show you an action shot of the Board Member from that district. I will say, we are very fortunate that oftentimes, schools and other organizations invite us to some of their philanthropic activities. In particular, I was able to attend KIPs Family Feud, and that's a picture of that evening where some of our local celebrities, along with students, got to compete in a Family Feud event. And I highly recommend, if you get invited to it, please go. It's one of the funniest things I've ever been to. Portraits of Pace, a number of us were able to attend that luncheon. Pace is for young women who are facing various issues, and some of them teen pregnancy, and they just do an amazing job at that luncheon, and the work that they do throughout the year, that luncheon helps sustain it. So, thank you to Pace for including us in that. I will say, Darrell Willie and Lori Hershey represented us just this past weekend at the Incubate Debate. I hear they were really amazing judges, and we were appreciative of them representing. And we also had our South Side Estates Groundbreaking. I will say, Board Member Pearson is that really happy person on the left there, because that's the groundbreaking there, and she's certainly cheering those children on. And then, Board Member Joyce was very excited at the Chaffey Trail Groundbreaking. Quite an action shot. I think she was almost off the ground because she was so excited. And so, we are excited right now because the referendum has allowed us to actually start building schools again and getting facilities that make sense and are right for our children. We do have a number of activities that are coming up, upcoming dates of interest. We always like to put these out there so that people who want to follow along in our work are able to do so. In particular, we have some subcommittee work that we're doing, but I'll orient you in particular to May nights. We have a Board Workshop, May 16th, an Agenda Committee Meeting, and Board Workshop as well. Our Sales Certex Oversight Committee is meeting on May 17th, and I will tell you that we're at our two-year celebration for that item. Mrs. Thompson, our Chief of Staff, has some exciting activities planned to celebrate those that have been a part of that work for two years, and we'll also be bringing on some new members as well. We have another groundbreaking later this month as well, out at Highlands. And then, our School Board Audit Advisory Committee is meeting. Many people know Board Member Joyce spearheaded our Board developing an Audit Advisory Committee about a year ago, and they have really done some heavy lifting in regards to that work, and we're now having a joint meeting with them. So, we're excited to hear what their work is all about. That being said, this picture I took, it was actually at Parkwood Heights. You can see Principal Price and Assistant Principal Simpson in it. And a couple of months ago, I talked about the fact that if you come to these Board Meetings, but you're not in our schools, I want to encourage you to get in our schools. And I wanted to show this as an illustration. South Side Christian is actually the church I grew up in. As a matter of fact, my Sunday school teacher for years is in that picture. And they did an excellent math activity with the students out in the back of that school right before Easter. And I just say, I know that for some people, you think you have to be a part of some big organization to be a part of our work. This is a smaller church and a smaller group, but they have great impact there at Parkwood Heights. So, whatever group you're affiliated with, we can find a niche for you in our school district. So, again, if you're here and you're talking with us, let us find a place for you to make a difference in our schools with our children. That being said, I will turn it over to our Superintendent for the Superintendent's Report.
We're going to start our report off with a quick little video.
Hi, I'm Brooklyn, and when I grow up, I want to be a CEO, but my parents said I have to go to kindergarten first.
That's right. Kindergarten is your first step towards a successful future. The good news is, Duval County Public Schools has plenty of amazing programs to begin your journey.
So, today began kindergarten enrollment, and we are so excited about the Class of 2036. All of our new entering kindergarteners get their own kindergartner swag bag. It comes with a composition book, kindergarten pencil, flashcards, superintendent letter, Parent Academy flyer for resources. And they also can sign up for a free laptop to stay at home once they enroll. And our schools have that information, and they can share that with our parents who are starting to enroll their kindergartners. There is also magnet and special transfer seats still available. So, for more information, please go to the School Choice page on our district website. So, that's a big deal, and please make sure that you have all of your information, such as your address, birth certificate, and other things that are on the website that will tell you what you need when you go to register your little one. This month, for the first time, actually, I think in five years, we were able to have sort of the 5,000 Role Models Award Ceremony. We had over 300 students that are members of the 5,000 Role Models come to the Schultz Center, and many of these students received awards, scholarships, and I believe, probably at the next Board Meeting, we will be recognizing those students who received... those students who received full-ride scholarships. Many of them are to HBCUs and other colleges. But just a little bit of background information, this organization, the 5,000 Models of Excellence Project, was founded in Miami-Dade Schools in 1993. Duval County Public Schools adopted it in 2015. And we started with 10 initial sites, five high schools and five middle schools. Currently, now, we've grown to 36 sites. And we are serving approximately 700 young men in grades three through 12. Students engage in weekly meetings for mentoring and leadership development. They participate in local college tours, career exploration and college-bound seniors are eligible for scholarships. When I attended the banquet last week, I was so impressed with one particular young man who was the keynote speaker. And like I said, I don't believe we've been able to have that award ceremony for quite some time. So I'm going to ask Caleb Motley to come forward and deliver his speech that he gave last week. And I think Caleb does introduce himself, so I don't want to take any of his thunder. So Caleb, would you please come forward?
Nothing in the world can take place of persistence. Talent will not. Nothing is more common than unsuccessful men with talent. Genius will not. Unrewarded genius is almost a proverb. Education will not. The world is full of educated derelicts. The slogan "Press On" has solved and always will solve the problem of the human race. I've just read for you a quote from the 30th President of the United States of America, Mr. Calvin Coolidge. "In this room, I see the future. In this room, I see persistence. In this room, I see success." I come from a Baptist background, so if you all just bear with me for a second. First, giving honor to God, who is the absolute head of my life, to our prestigious Congresswoman Wilson, our lovely Superintendent Dr. Green, because we please give her a round of applause. To the honorable board members, my mother and father, all of the mentors, as well as my fellow mentees. Could you all please stand? Could we give them a hand as well? Good evening. You know, as a member of the 5,000 Role Models of Excellence Project, I can say that when I joined, this is not what I envisioned. I envisioned boring talks about being a black male, hearing college this and college that, and being in a room where nothing really happens, potentially wasting my time after school. The first meeting I attended, we read the creed, the prayer, and the Ten Commandments. To my surprise, everything was beautifully written. I am not what most call the typical young black male. I don't come from a one-parent home. I don't come from a household living paycheck to paycheck. I don't have to worry if I'll eat when I get home from school. Unfortunately, that is the label put on us. That's what others see when they see us. However, since putting on my signature red tie, my white dress shirt, and my black dress pants, I felt a change amongst my community. My teachers tell me I look good. My peers tell me I look like a businessman. And even the ladies in the cafeteria shouted, "Now that's what I'm talking about." This is all because of the 5,000 Role Models of Excellence Project. Last year, around this time, we went on a trip to Miami. We took visits to Florida Memorial University, Florida Atlantic University, and Florida International University. We were able to get a good feel of how college felt, a grasp of what our lives would look like in the future for potentially four years. We went to various monuments, including just walking down the street in two single-file lines while lots upon lots of people complimented us as we walked in brotherhood and unity. As a young black male in America, we've always been told everything will be all right, or you'll figure it out sooner or later. You see, growing up black is not easy, especially when you're a young male. It seems as if you have no one to guide you at times, because no one understands how it is to be a young black man, except for the one in the mirror. But something about the 5,000 Role Models of Excellence Project gives us a sense of hope, a beacon of light, the will and the determination to do anything that we want to in life. The amount of motivation that we receive while being in this program is outstanding. I would like to thank all of our mentors in this program for all that you do. It does not go unnoticed. To see the amount of brotherhood that comes from the 5,000, to see the potential number of future lawyers, future doctors, future educators, future musicians, future professional athletes, future authors, future artists, future engineers, future entrepreneurs, all of the above, it gives me a sense of urgency that the 5,000 Role Models of Excellence Project is heading our community into the right direction. It is because of the 5,000 Role Models of Excellence Project that I was accepted into 29 colleges over the last three to four months. It is because of the 5,000 Role Models of Excellence Project that I will be attending the Clark Atlanta University, majoring in Business Administration, to obtain my bachelor's It is because of the 5,000 Role Models of Excellence Project that I have maintained a 3.88 GPA. It is indeed because of the 5,000 Role Models of Excellence Project that every young man in this great program will be successful. As I come to a close, I am challenging every member of the 5,000 Role Models of Excellence Project to invite two friends to come to the next meeting that you have at your site. Be the change you would like to see. As well as any males in this room who would also like to join as a mentor, please see Mr. Brandon Mack or Mr. Ernest Almond for more information. I am to the utmost of my heart proud to say that I am and will forever be a member of the 5,000 Role Models of Excellence Project. In the great words of Dr. Susan Jeffers, "Feel the fear and do it anyway." We are...
5,000.
We are...
5,000.
We are...
5,000.
Thank you.
I want to thank Caleb for that. It was a powerful speech last week, and it's still very powerful, Caleb. Thank you so much for everything that you shared. And I want to thank the other young men who are here supporting you. And I'd like Mr. Brandon Mack to please stand. And if he would introduce the other mentors who are here for our audience.
So we have Mr. Motley. We have Mr. Ernest Almond, who is also supervisor. And we have Chris Burton as well. And we have our wonderful school board members as well.
They are still looking for more mentors. It is mentors are the only qualification you need is to be a male. So please look for Mr. Brandon Mack. And there are times that females are there to support the group. But we really are so proud of these young men that they are changing the conversation. They are changing the way young African-American males are being viewed. And they are being successful and thriving. And as a school district, we should be so proud of the work that many organizations offer to our schools. You just heard about I'm a Star Foundation. And now, this one that comes directly from the school district, the 5,000 Role Models of Excellence Project, is changing lives and changing our community. Thank you. That is the end of my report.
Thank you. We are now going to move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. The school board welcomes your comments on matters that are before the board for consideration. It is not the board's intent to respond this evening, but to use the input in our deliberations. To give everyone appropriate respect and courtesy, we ask that the audience refrain from audible comments or applause. When you come to the microphone, please state your name for the record. The board will allocate time for public comment periods based on the number of speakers who have filled out speaker cards prior to the designated time. If there are 1 to 20 speakers that have signed up to speak, each will be allotted three minutes. If we are at 21 to 40 speakers which have signed up to speak, each will be allotted two minutes. And if 41 or more speakers have signed up to speak, each will be allotted one minute. This evening, we have 30 speakers, so each speaker will be allotted two minutes to speak. When the green light in front of me starts blinking, you will have a minute remaining. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds remaining. When it turns red, the buzzers and the buzzer sounds, your time will be up. If your concerns exceed that time, we always welcome you to present written comments to the board. That can be done through Mr. Poole, who is our Office of General Counsel at the end of the dais. Board policy provides for an orderly and efficient meeting without disruption by words or actions. You are asked to refrain from references to specific individuals and to follow expectations for civil discourse. We have placed hand sanitizer and disinfective wipes at the podium, and we ask that each speaker wipe down the microphone and podium before they address the board. Please remember that speaker cards were only accepted up until 6:20 PM this evening. Thank you for your time to address the board. And with that, I will turn it over to Vice Chair Pearson.
Thank you. I will call, start with three names. The first name is at the microphone. The second name is second in line. And the third name would be third in line. And as I call a new name, please go to the number three spot. The first name is Robert Stafford. The second is Tim Miller. And the third is Darlene Miller.
Good evening. My name is Robert Stafford. And I'm here to discuss transparency. The way to manage a customer's expectations is to be honest and transparent. And that's not occurring at all times. At times, it's been responsible. But if you haven't been transparent to the general public. Now, when I ask questions, I get responses. And I've known members of DCPS, employees that have been generous, gracious with their time and forthcoming with them information. One thing you need to do is stop telling this lie about deferred maintenance being $1 billion. Even on the dashboard, saying $339 million. That, you need to delete that from the quarter of the reports and not make mention of that again. That's a lie. The second part is, you have to post these artifacts in a timely manner. Just today, the dashboard updated. When I was here last month, I told you it updated on the 4th. It turned over today. And there are some discrepancies with the difference with the February 27th iteration and April 4th iteration. Those are the things that bother me most. There are a lot of errors and calculations, solícisms, and omissions. There are links that don't work. And when they work, they direct you to the wrong place. You have a very serious problem with quality of your artifacts and the things that you post that are available to the public. You're not getting a return on our investment with the Surtax. Stop saying that there's a billion dollars' worth of deferred maintenance out there. I'm going to request three facilities condition assessment reports. And I want to review them. I've done the work, and I know the work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in line is Frank DeLong.
Good evening. My name is Tim Miller. This district has had a reporting issue for a long time. We know about DA, but it goes much further. The district doesn't have a way for people to anonymously report concerns, at least not that I'm aware of or anyone that I've talked to. People are afraid to report issues because they fear for their jobs. Bottom line. Teacher evaluations are very subjective. You can have good student outcomes, but you can be told, "You're not doing small groups right. You're not doing technology right." So they're very subjective. And teachers don't want to rock the boat because of that. They're not going to report them if they're afraid for their job. It's just bottom line. What you need to do is you need to have an independent third-party company that will receive, track, and investigate, with the help of the school system, obviously, these concerns, so that teachers can raise these issues without fear of their job, without fear of retaliation. And it may not be just jobs. It might be being demoted or moved to a less desirable position. I know people who have concerns about referrals, class threes being downgraded to class one, so it looks better for the school. I know people who have concerns about misappropriation of funds, especially ESE funds, which is something that everyone knows is near and dear to my heart. We need to have a way for students, employees and students, if they find it as well, to raise these issues in a way that they feel safe to do that without being concerned about their livelihoods. Otherwise, it's never going to happen. Those issues are never going to get raised to the level they need to be at in order to be investigated. It's just not going to happen if they're fearful for their jobs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next in line is Justin Kugler.
Good evening. My name is Darlene Miller. I have been around Duval County for a very long time now. I will tell you that the current Superintendent is one of the favorites among the teachers of the past. I can also tell you that this situation that you deal with is going back many years in many different forms. I know Tim stepped up here and told you about referrals. I know about referrals. Child hits a teacher, but that's just a 2.10 failure to adhere to school safety. Really, that's a 3.0, even if the child is six. A six-year-old shot a teacher. We can't stop, we got to stop excusing children for their behaviors. Does that mean we have arrested? No. But that does mean we need to document what's going on in the school system. We also need some kind of way for teachers to report what teachers know. Many years ago, my oldest is 24 now, he was in middle school, I had to hire an attorney for ESE services. Next thing I know, district people had issues with what was going on in my classroom. District people who never stepped foot in my classroom before. So, yeah, it happens. In this county, it really happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in line is Melissa Bernhardt.
Frank DeLong, Chairman of the IBW 177. Congratulations. We just hit the 95 mark for open positions with the school board. We just argued over 16 cents an hour for someone who promised $22 an hour to work here as a plumber. Then, the $22 an hour was froze by the HR department. Now, we have a proposal you have already voted on or not voted on, to have a contractor at $382,214.12 to hire three non-licensed plumbers and one licensed plumber at the cost of $95,553.50 each, and provide them with four trucks at approximately $60,000 each, plus free maintenance and gas, about $7,000 a year, and some tools, and a gracious 20% markup on material. Now, someone had the balls to blame the IBW for wanting to raise this for all employees. In this proposal, and you used the word "assuming" a 30% increase, you could hire two people for one contractor. Someone needs to pull their head out of their assets. And now, we find out that the district is quietly closing out...
Sir, sir, just a reminder, sir, that we do have students that listen. And we want to hear everything. We do. We appreciate all that you do and whatnot. But a reminder, we do have students that listen. Would you put 15 seconds back on the clock for my interruption? And I apologize, but...
Would you put 15 seconds back on the clock for my interruption, and I apologize, but thank you so much.
Yeah. And now we find out the district has been quietly closing out our vacancies to hire contractors and not telling us about it. This contractor you want to hire, we looked at what wages are going to do, just going to give him a $200,000 profit, and you can't hire, raise wages for our employees? That's pretty sad.
Next in line is Jerry Woodham.
Good evening. I'm Justin Kugler, parent of two DCPS students. There are really, you know, two things that I hope y'all will keep in mind this evening. One, you know, I've got a daughter that is thinking about, you know, going to DA as she rises up through the system, and I want to be 100% sure that if that is the path she takes, that she has a safe and welcoming environment waiting for her. So I enthusiastically and wholeheartedly support the call from DA alums and families to do a full and transparent investigation with a community board that is working alongside them to make sure that everyone is taken care of, that we get justice for the people that were harmed, and that this, you know, horrible tale is never repeated in this district again. Not just for my kids, but for all kids in the district. And I just really hope that you'll keep that in mind and that, you know, other people's agendas or, you know, political ambitions don't get in the way of that. The second thing I want to ask y'all to do is to vote against the bathroom policy that's being proposed tonight. I think it's a solution in search of a problem. I'm, you know, way more worried about fixing the problems that are already apparent in this system than finding other people to scapegoat for things that adults do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in line is Megan Johnson.
Good evening. Melissa Bernhardt with Citizens Defending Freedom. Thank you for being here tonight and listening to my comments. I want to recap some things, and I am concerned about some of the language, so I'll do my best to keep it okay. Loudoun County, Virginia, 2021. A student who claims to be transgender male, who has been having consensual, you know, in the girls' bathroom, however, on one occasion, he, R-A-P-E-D, a girl, transferred to another school six months later, and that student again, R-A-P-E-D, a girl, in the girls' bathroom. Oklahoma, December 2022. A student who claims to be a transgender male enters the girls' bathroom and violently assaults and punches a girl repeatedly in her face. April 2023, California. A student who claims to be a transgender male enters the girls' bathroom locker room, sorry, not locker room, not bathroom. The student flashes his, you-know-what genitals all around to the girls, and then he spits on them until a fight breaks out, where he, the student towers over the smaller female, and the student pumbles her violently. DCPS has had enough unwanted negative publicity, don't let, excuse me, don't endanger girls in female-specific, safe spaces. A P-N-I-S has no reason to be in the bathroom or locker room with ovaries. Protect the girls and vote yes on Policy 5.08. There is absolutely no reason we should be here discussing this. Girls need to be protected. We're talking about protecting people. And we're like letting these girls go into bathrooms, and there's some things with menstrual cycles that, that boys just don't have any business in there dealing with that. Some girls are struggling with their cycle. And to have a male be in the bathroom, it is hard enough to deal with how you deal with your hygiene. And to be assaulted, potentially pregnant? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up in line is Beverly Banta.
My name is Chaplain Jerry Woodham. I stand for Stand for Jacks tonight, as well as being a mother and a grandmother. I've had three boys graduate out of Duval County. I thank all the school board members who have been willing to serve, to do what is right for our students. Some of the things that are happening are choosing one's belief and rights over another. This is not fair. When one voice has more rights over another. All students should feel safe in their schools physically and mentally. They should be allowed to go to a restroom or locker and not feel that someone of another sex will be there. I can remember, as I'm sure that many of you remember, how uncomfortable it is when you have to shower with other girls, or if you are a guy, with other guys. You felt that they were comparing you because everybody matures at different times. Well, how would you feel if you were a girl in the shower and a biological male walked in? I believe that God created two genders, Genesis 1:27. He created us in His image, male and female. There are people here that disagree, but I, just as many students, believe they have a right to feel safe as well. This Policy 5.08 will make them feel safe. For others, they should have access to a private shower or locker to make them feel safe. Everyone has a right to feel safe when they're in the shower, when they are their most vulnerable. Thank you for your time. God bless you all.
Thank you. Next in line is Dan Merkin.
My name is Megan Johnson. My children go to New Berlin Elementary. I've been making reports since March about bullying and harassment. The Florida statute says it is policy that all students and employees have a setting that is safe, secure, and free from bullying and harassment. My son has come home to tell me he doesn't want to live anymore because it's gotten so bad. I keep making reports, and I feel like I'm getting the runaround. Reports since March and April, I've went through every appropriate channel, including emailing superintendents. There has been physical and verbal abuse, groping, my son got choked out on the bus, harassment for lifestyle choices, racial slurs. The first bus driver, who has been taken off the bus route for a sexual offense pertaining to this, told me that he'd filed an instant report, but I've never seen it. I don't know where to find it. I don't know if I need to make my own at this point. I need help, I need answers, and I need support to help keep my kids and everybody's kids safe in our schools. I need to know where, I need to find out how many students have been suspended, and what are the consequences for all these bullying and harassments? The handbook says that there are disciplinary actions for each offense, but here we are with a handful of issues and no resolution.
Next in line is Timothy Zandell.
Good evening. My name is Beverly Banta. I have a dream. I look forward to the day when I can say that our school board uses the utmost integrity in their decisions. Integrity, doing the right thing and doing it right. I look forward to the day when lawful consequences will be carried out for unlawful behavior. I look forward to the day when we know our children are first and foremost the reason for every decision that the school board makes. I am also asking you to vote yes on Policy 5.08, and I'm just, I'm praying that the day comes soon when all the things are done well. Thank you.
Thank you.
As the next speaker is coming up, I just happened to note we have former school superintendent Pat Willis in the back. Dr. Willis, as always, we're grateful to have you with us.
Next in line is Sharman Smith.
Hi, I'm Dan Merkin. My address is on file. I'm here to speak about the upcoming policy change that's been suggested or recommended, again, with the anti-LGBT stuff. Is that all this board can do? Over the last 12 months, let's recap what this group has done with the assistance of the superintendent. We've rolled back LGBT guidance, we've removed safe space stickers, we've censored LGBT content in plays and books, we've gutted the only source of information we have about the LGBT population by not doing the YRBS. Where does it stop? You all know better, and you know half the claims that are being made tonight are just fabrications to further an agenda to harm LGBT people. That's all it is. But none of you seem to have the backbone to stand up to it, and that's really, really disappointing. So let me tell you this, you have data, because you've had this policy on the books about transgender young people using the bathrooms for a decade, and you know darn well there haven't been any incidents. And you know darn well, it's not the students that are calling for this change in the policy, it's the right-wing extremist politicians who are based in Tallahassee that are pushing this down the throats and doing things that are actually going to harm young people, and that's embarrassing for this county and for everyone that sits up there and has a brain in their head. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in line is Melissa Raifus.
Good evening. My name is Timothy Zandell. I've got three points for your consideration tonight regarding proposed change to Policy Manual Section 7.9 with respect to restitution and settlement claims. I propose a clause saying all funds received from restitution or settlements shall be deposited in the general account of the school board. No funds shall be dispersed except upon a vote of the board. Second, regarding Policy Change 508 with respect to bathrooms, locker rooms, and overnight trips, vote yes. This is a common sense measure designed to keep our kids safe. It'll keep the bad actors from taking advantage of an ambiguous situation. And finally, regarding superintendent travel, vote no. We're operating in unusual circumstances, and it's not business as usual, and we need to suspend such activities until the outcome of the investigation. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Next in, thank you. Next in line is Holly Dean.
I'm a Fletcher parent, a former bill collector, mortgage underwriter, and fraud investigator. I'm here to continue my ongoing math equation for this community because I think you made a critical mistake if you want your insurers to pay the upcoming claim for the class action lawsuit that is pending against you. It is my understanding that there are 50 active files that have been submitted to the state, and it's also my understanding that Dr. Green has decided to leave, and she spent a great-
Ma'am, ma'am, please don't refer to people by names. Thank you so much.
I apologize. The superintendent has decided to leave, but she was out on multiple medical leaves due to surgeries, and I would like to know who was responsible for doing those investigations while she was out. Whoever that person is also needs to be dismissed with 20 weeks of severance as well. That person is just as responsible as our current superintendent is. And I want to spend some time, as an adult survivor of childhood sexual abuse, to talk about grooming, because grooming is so much more than just what one adult does to one child, and it is much more about how predators groom the community to do their dirty work. And locker room talk is the gateway drug that turns our precious little boys into monsters who defend rape and make excuses for rape, and they protect each other. And we do have a problem in our middle schools, and our coaches could be doing things to correct it, but that's not what has been taking place. Our dress code, where we shame girls and don't allow them to wear shoulders exposed, we're not teaching the boys to control themselves, we're not telling the boys that they have to grow up. We continue to perpetuate a cycle where boys will be boys and we just make excuses for their bad behavior, and the community is no longer interested in participating in this. We know what is going on is wrong, and the adults have to do something about it, but it is going to have to be the men. I wasn't surprised to hear board members here complain about not wanting men in their classrooms with their daughters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next in line is Dr. Carmen Martinez.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Raifus. My address information is on file. Like many in our community, I have been shocked and saddened by the situation at Douglas Anderson. To also layer on top of the actual things that happened to students and children under our watch, that we delayed reporting educator misconduct is disheartening. I would urge you, now that we are getting insights into what has been happening over the years at Douglas Anderson, that we not assume that that is the only school at which there have been delays in reporting educator misconduct. I would call for an audit across all our schools and all those files that parents have created or that children have created through complaints and concerns and fear, and make sure that these delays in reporting are not taking place in a much wider span than we would like to think. Also, along the lines of protecting our children, protecting our girls, I urge you to vote yes for Policy 5.08. There is no place for biological males in the bathrooms of our young girls. They do not need, certainly, to be assaulted, one would hope that wouldn't happen, but they do not need to be distressed by having biological males looking at their bodies and free to participate in everything that's going on in a girl's space. Please vote yes on 5.08. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in line is Ivy Suter.
Good evening. My name is Holly Dean, and I'm here tonight to express support for Policy 5.08, and I urge the board to vote yes. This is such a simple but common sense policy that protects children and preserves parental rights. Thank you for bringing this policy up for a vote, and I hope to see many more like this protecting students and protecting parents' rights. In addition, with everything that has been in the news recently surrounding Douglas Anderson and reporting, I would like to offer a few suggestions to the board. More rigorous screening and selection of staff, detailed rules governing teacher-student online interactions, district-based policies on behavior, regular training on educators' sexual misconduct for parents, students, and educators, and whistleblower protection for those who report breaches of conduct. I would urge you to consider these and other options to ensure the safety of children.
Thank you. Next in line is Dr. Patricia Willis.
My name is Ivy Suter. I urge the board to vote yes on Policy 5.08, which is a common sense policy for bathroom use in DCPS. Recent comments by a current school board member acknowledge that sometimes there are people with bad intentions who take advantage of policies. This same logic supports the need for Policy 5.08 for the safety of girls. There have been cases across the nation, also referenced by other speakers, where boys enter girls' bathrooms and harm them. In addition, I urge the board to amend Policy 7.09 such that all funds received from restitution or settlements shall be deposited in the general account of the DCSB. No funds shall be dispersed except upon a vote of the board. This would prevent fraud and malfeasance. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. As Dr. Willis comes to the mic, I'm calling Gamble Scott and Becky Nathanson.
To our board chair, honorable board members, Madam Superintendent, I am Dr. Patricia S. Willis, a very proud product of Duval County Public Schools, a former teacher in Duval County, principal of three schools in Duval County, was a former chief operating officer for the Schultzen Professional Development for Duval County Public Schools, deputy superintendent, and most recently- deputy superintendent, and most recently the interim, past interim superintendent for Duval County Public Schools. As a matter of fact, my entire professional career has been with the Duval County Public Schools. Having served in the role of interim superintendent just before our superintendent came, I understand the immense job that this role requires. I understand what it means to wake up every morning with the priority of ensuring a safe educational environment for every child and every student who's entrusted to our care. One of my favorite quotes is by James Baldwin, "For these are all our children, and we will either profit by or pay for what they become." I believe our superintendent shares this sentiment. Now, there are a lot of things that I could address with this time tonight, as I'm keenly aware of the critical and important matters that have come before this board, and I understand that this board certainly would do their due diligence in handling these matters. Nevertheless, I would rather use this time to honor a colleague who has done an outstanding job in her role as superintendent. Her competence, skill, knowledge, professionalism, and grace has left this school district so much better than when she founded it. Thank you for your sacrifice. Thank you for your unwavering support of Team Duval. Thank you for your focus and never taking the academic achievement of our students lightly, for you never did and you never have. It's evident in the achievements of our children. I would be remiss if I did not go on record to say that you have done an outstanding job for our students, children, and teachers, an outstanding leader, and as a result of your impact on Duval County Public Schools.
Thank you.
It would never be the same again. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Job well done.
Next in line is Josh Nathanson.
Hi, Gamble Scott. I didn't even know what to talk about tonight. I'm still reeling from the shameful emergency meeting earlier today. I wanted to thank the three board members who voted responsibly, attempting to postpone the meeting until we can have an actual investigation and find out what's going on and who all is responsible. I want to encourage all of our school board members to act in the best interest of our students. Our governor and his fanatic supporters are executing a terrifying campaign to dismantle public education and dehumanize our LGBTQ population. The passage of HB1, a horrific bill stripping funding from our public schools, has been supported by at least one school board member sitting here tonight. Make that make sense, because it doesn't make any sense to me. Whether you were endorsed by the governor or placed on his disgusting hit list and are now acting out of fear, I'm here to remind you, it's never too late to separate yourself from the dangerous, harmful ideals of the current governor. And as an aside, commenting on a lot of the other comments tonight, it's very, very disgusting how many people are conflating a transgender individual with a sexual predator, just like you guys fight against gun laws because bad people will still get guns anyways. A sexual predator is going to go into any bathroom or space he wants, he or her wants, and does, they're going to do what they're going to do. And this policy that doesn't even need to exist because nobody's in danger from anything isn't going to do anything but further dehumanize a very vulnerable part of our student population. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in line is Natalie Dreyer.
Good evening. My name is Becky Nathanson. We're all noticing the inconsistency of when the rules are enforced and when they're not, so just pointing that out, that happened earlier today and tonight. Good evening. My name is Becky Nathanson with Moms for Liberty Duval. I'd like to speak to the added language, it's already been mentioned, regarding policy 7.09. In light of the crisis that this board is facing, I think you have a real opportunity to extend some goodwill and perhaps take a step towards rebuilding some trust. The members of the public who are paying attention are losing confidence in the board's ability to provide proper oversight and scrutiny of the school district. Everyone in the room knows that this board is facing massive legal action as a result of those in charge failing to provide oversight. And everyone in this room knows that it's the taxpayers who will fit the bill when it comes to settling with so many victims. With this in mind, I urge the board to add to clause, add a clause to item 7.0C, which was already said, all funds received from restitution or settlement be deposited into the general account. As it's currently drafted, there's room for a superintendent to use these funds at her discretion, and it seems at the current moment you might consider providing more scrutiny since the taxpayers will be putting the bill for your legal settlements. The least you could do is put monies received back into the general fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in line is Haley Luskowski.
Good evening. My name is Josh Nathanson. I would like to second that. There's different rules for different speakers. If you guys could just be consistent when that happens. I am here also in support of the vote tonight to have separate bathrooms. I'm here today also to speak against the hiring of the law firm Weiss-Sarota. During the April 26 meeting, the Office of General Counsel stated that they incurred transparency and wanted to explain why the firm was selected. It was also stated that they eliminated everyone local because they did not want a firm that has any ties to anyone in particular. The OGC lawyer said that he is familiar with a member of the firm, and it was the opinion of the OGC that this firm can deliver an unbiased, thorough investigation. The OGC then stated that the law firm has represented 28 school boards, then specifically identified two Florida school boards. What was not disclosed to the public or the board members was this firm had a past history with DCPS. They sued the state of Florida and lost when the district defied an executive order by illegally masking students and infringing on student and parental rights. I feel that it is likely this firm has a bias and, in fact, has a past ties with DCPS. This contradicts what was stated by the OGC in their selection process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next in line is Alex Price.
Hi, I'm Natalie Dreyer. I'm the mom to two amazing middle school students. I stood in the lobby today during today's awards presentations. People from all walks of life, likely here for different reasons, easily maintain respect and decorum in that environment. We may all care about different things or different views, but we are all here to be heard. This environment is no different. The client auditorium should not be where free speech goes to die. We are all first, we are all Americans, and we are all protective of the First Amendment Right of Free Speech. To this end, I implore you to honor your own board policy, policy 2.26.6(c). There is nothing in speaker protocol that expressly prohibits saying names. Your names are and names of anybody for that matter. To reduce the common respect of someone who comes here to offer you their words and to have you admonish them only because they dared to say your name, it needs to end. It's wrong. Especially today, and you made exceptions. Earlier today, Ms. Priestley Jackson spoke her unedited thoughts into this microphone. And Chair Coker, Vice Chair Pearson, everyone here is as deserving as any former elected official. You aren't more special than us, and you shouldn't demand your delicate treatment. Your knowing misinterpretation of board policy as you try to sanction your constituents. Please honor your policy. Being honest players and tough adults will help you begin to rebuild public trust. Thank you.
Thank you. And you did address two board members, and I did not correct you on that. But that, anyway. Kathleen Murray is next in line.
Hello. My name is Haley Luskowski, and I'm speaking against policy 5.08. I love that May has been declared Mental Health Awareness Month. I love the ideas expressed earlier behind reducing stigma, but I am curious about the follow-through. What does this involve for all students? Does this include our transgender youth? I urge you to please stop claiming that this policy is being put in place to protect our children. Stop pretending that you care about all children. I myself have a trans son, and I wonder what will be done to protect him? How will you protect him when he becomes a target of bullying due to your discriminatory policies? While I'm sure minds have already been made up here, I'm certain that the producers of this hate will land on the wrong side of history. To the youth that is here or any youth that may be listening, you matter, you are wonderful just the way that you are. I hope everyone recognizes that this policy is not an issue of safety or improvement of education for our youth. It's a matter of fear and intolerance of individuals that do not fall in line with personal ideals and beliefs. While my values may not align with yours, I do believe that all children deserve to be cared for and protected, not just the ones who are heterosexual, cisgender, and white. It is Mental Health Awareness Month. You guys just declared it, which is so awesome, again. But I still want to know, are we concerned about the mental health issues being perpetuated by depression targeted toward our trans youth? Science has continuously confirmed that gender is not binary. There's a clear spectrum. Whatever discomfort or fear you're feeling while being faced with these cultural differences, I can assure you, it is no match for the discomfort and fear that my youth and others like him have to endure on a day-to-day basis from the moment they wake up in a seemingly never-ending effort just to be accepted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in line is Jack Wong.
My name is Alex Price, veteran, research scientist, engineer. Here to speak against the bathroom bill. It, you guys say it's for protection, but it's not actually protecting anybody. So in the Navy, we used to have don't ask, don't tell. Didn't really help anybody. We still shared those bathrooms with those same people. After it was repealed, nobody was getting assaulted at some higher rate. And we still have laws that say that assault is wrong. Are you going to just post a police officer outside each bathroom? Because I don't, I don't think, for one, you have the resources. And having them question every single person who goes into those restrooms is not, for one, feasible, nor is it humane. You're going to be embarrassing so many students, whether they are of cis or transgender. And this is not, there's no difference between this and don't ask, don't tell, and there's no difference between this and segregating bathrooms based on race back in the 60s. Be on the right side of history.
Thank you. Next in line is Yu Ping Song.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Murray, Executive Director for Duval County Citizens Defending Freedom. After a long and emotional day, we would like to thank you for allowing us to speak in support of the following. First, please take immediate steps to better care for the female victims of sexual abuse at Douglas Anderson and in Duval Public Schools. As mentioned earlier, due to staffing issues, there are no female police officers currently assigned to interview the victims of sexual abuse or assault. As a minimum, we are requesting that in the absence of women police investigators, that women counselors and school psychologists be present for interviewing female victims. Continuing with the topic of gender, we are respectfully asking support for policy 5.08. For those watching online, this policy simply codifies what used to be common sense, and that is, only biological girls should be allowed in girls' locker rooms, and only biological girls should be allowed in girls' bathrooms. And on school overnight field trips, only biological girls should room with biological girls. As one speaker has pointed out, to date, there have not been any reported incidents of sexual assault by biological boys using girls' bathrooms. However, in light of my first point concerning the absence of female police investigators, we cannot be sure that the numbers are accurate and that they are not artificially low out of fear of reporting. Thank you in advance for your consideration.
Thank you. Next in line is Dalton Bragg.
Okay, good evening. My name is Jack Wong. I have two things to talk, to talk today. First, I want to support April County's proposed change 5.08. Boys and girls should be separated in public school restrooms, locker rooms, and field trips. This is common sense. I want to share a short story. When I was in high school, there was a boy was expelled from school because he pretended to be a lady and sneaked into the lady's bathroom. He was so curious to see lady's body. We all feel sad for him. If he is here in America right now, he can just claim he is a girl, then he will be, he will not be expelled from school. My question is, how can we tell a boy is just curious about lady's body and tell us he is a girl? If this boy is allowed to go to lady's restroom, imagine what can happen. The answer is, we cannot. I don't want anybody to accept my value. At the same time, please do not force me to accept yours. If you think you're a dog, yeah, it's okay with me, but don't let me accept you're a dog. I just want my daughter to be safe. Stop the nonsense. The second thing I want to talk is how I can help. I'm a college chemistry professor for over a decade. I saw the struggle of my students. They're lacking some basic math skills, chemistry skills, reading skills, a lot of skills. These deficiencies need to be fixed at their high school years and middle school years. I can offer free workshops for new teaching pedagogy for teachers. I can also offer the other helps to help high school teachers whatever they need. But I do not know, who should I talk to? I think people in this room all care about the education of our children. Can anybody offer me some information? I appreciate your help. I will stay after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, as Mr. Bragg makes his way, we have in line Margaret Yarborough and Pat Villa.
Hi there. My name is Dalton Bragg. I've got a bunch of qualifications in early childhood education. I've worked with children for over 14 years in various capacities. I've always been professional. Taught English in China, Nicaragua, Mexico. I've been in charge of multiple before and after-school care programs. I was recently the children's program coordinator at the Solzbacher Center, Children for, Center for Homeless Women and Families. I was even invited to speak as a panelist and share my expertise for FLECY. I'm sure you guys are familiar with Florida Advancement of Education of Young Children. And in my capacity as an expert, it is in my expert opinion that I am against the bathroom change policy. I can tell you firsthand that this will directly result in the dehumanization and endangerment of our trans youth. Our trans youth already are a very vulnerable population, and they, they're probably our most vulnerable population. And doing this just makes them into a target. Like, you guys haven't thought through the feasibility of enacting something like this. And sending them to a separate bathroom is not an okay consolation. That is not an acceptable compromise. By doing that, you segregate them, you make them different, you ostracize them from everyone else, and everyone sees it. They will be targeted, they will be bullied, they will feel like they don't belong. It is no different than segregating water fountains in the 1960s. That is not the side of history you guys want to be on, right? It didn't work then, it's not going to work now. And as far as, someone shared some statistics, some cases of sexual assault done by transgender people or people claiming to be transgender. I would love to see those citations, because I have delved into the, what's the name of it?
Thank you. You can send the rest of your comments by email if you'd like. And last in line is Dr. Jennifer Cowart.
Good evening. I'm Margaret Yarborough, and I support policy which requires students to use bathrooms, dressing rooms, and locker rooms which correspond with their biological sex at birth. I would appreciate a level of sanity and righteousness being restored to the schools. I think that's needed. From my experiences as a DCPS parent, it is glaringly obvious that, one, the district protects its reputation at the cost of children's safety, and, two, the district does so in order to keep thousands of dollars per student from leaving DCPS schools. Hopefully, school vouchers will motivate DCPS to correct course this fall. DCPS can begin to correct what is surely a systemic problem, not just at DA, by, one, putting cameras in the classroom to keep everyone honest and accountable. You say you care about safe and supportive schools, so why not prove it? Two, having parents and students report crime to JSO, not the Duval County Police Department, which is what the grand jury recommended. And, three, follow through with consequences for students and staff who violate policy and law. This has to change. This has to change. I pray that you will demand higher standards moving forward and that the next superintendent is someone who abides by laws and policies. That should be non-negotiable. I mean, that's a deal breaker right there. You gotta follow laws and policies no matter what. I don't care how nice you are. And we need to not stop, you know, failing kids upward, and we need somebody who's gonna do the right thing no matter what. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, my name is Pat Villa, and I have a BS degree in nursing, and I also claim to have a PhD in common sense, which I don't think anybody needs to go to college to have a common sense degree on what's going on here. And so, I'm in favor of yes to the Policy 5.08. And as far as science goes, there are only two sets of chromosomes that determine a male and a female. An XX is a female, and an XY is a male. Anything outside that, anything outside those two sets of chromosomes is considered gender dysphoria. I suggest that we separate bathrooms and locker rooms for the group of people who think they have the right to say they are a male or a female, and, like, kinda like the family bathrooms, okay? It's possible that this, having this policy, no, I'm sorry, policy, I'm sorry, the fact that boys and girls are in the same bathrooms, this could result in a case of rape, and that's not a good thing. I myself don't like to shower naked in front of other women, let alone other men. I mean, come on, what are you guys thinking? And then, as far as the misconduct, everybody needs to be accountable for their actions. We were born undisciplined, and that's why we have laws and rules for order. We need order. And in the case of, like, domestic violences, if incidents are not reported, they are never, then the court considers that they never occurred. When you go to court, you lose. So, anything that's been, an incident needs to be recorded to the law in a legal fashion so that down the road, they're accounted for. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Jennifer Cowart. I am here in opposition to the proposed bathroom bill. There are many ways to express one's gender, and many chromosomes, and ways to express them. You could have an X naught and be Turner Syndrome. You can be XXY and have Kleinfelter's. You can be XX but born virilized and have indeterminate genitalia as a baby was born that way when I was on my internal medicine and OB-GYN rotation as a medical student. The baby could not be appropriately determined what gender they were supposed to be because of the ambiguity of their genitalia at birth. They required a chromosome test and hormonal treatment for their adrenal problem, and I don't think anyone, any adult, should be trying to inspect the genitals of such a child as they're going through the school district to try to figure out what bathroom they should use. I think common sense also dictates that we look at the outcomes of such a policy that we're proposing here. Who's inspecting? Who's asking? Who's using which bathrooms? There are logistics, that is a common sense problem we need to look at. I think this, this bill is a solution in search of a problem, and I do think, do not think it would make any children safer. Sexual assault is already illegal and against all district policy. This bill will do nothing to change that. Second, I want to say that as we look for new district leadership, I would ask for transparency and accountability in the search process, and that we center all of our vulnerable students in that process, that we center books, that we center our students, we bring books back into the classroom, and that the citizens have the say and some oversight in this process. Thank you.
Thank you.
No audible applause, please, thank you.
And Dr. Pierce will read the wave comments.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, we have 18 individuals who have waived their speaking time. Kimberly Patrick is in support of DCPS Policy 5.08. Shyla Jenkins is in support of the Douglas Anderson investigation. Jeff Anisun is in support of the proposed change to 5.808, the policy regarding mandatory separation of boys and girls in public school bathrooms, locker rooms, and field trips. Brian Morel, or Morl, is in support of 5.08 to keep girls safe in their own bathrooms. Joseph Lynn is in support of voting yes on 5.08 in support of the new laws. He is also, appears to be in support of reporting to FLDOE. Felix Roya is in support of the adoption of the budget resolution, which includes ESER funds for teacher bonuses. Charles Callahan is in support of a yes vote for the mandatory separation of females and males for public school bathrooms, locker rooms, and overnight trips. James Radloff is in support of Policy 5.08 to vote yes. Tina Radloff is also in support of a yes vote for Policy 5.08. Zin Liu is in support of a yes vote for 5.08 in support of new laws prohibiting biological males from using female bathrooms. Ed Williams is in support of the proposed bathroom bill. Tabitha Byers is in support of a yes vote on the proposed change to 5.08 regarding mandatory separation of boys and girls in public school restrooms and field trips. Lori Crunden is in support of the proposed change of 5.08 to the DCPS policy of mandatory separation of boys and girls in public school restrooms and field trips. James Crunden is in support of the change to 5.08, the DCPS policy regarding mandatory separation of boys and girls in public school bathrooms, locker rooms, and field trips. Deanna Adamson is in support of 5.08 to keep gender restrooms separate. Cheryl Veretta is in opposition to revisions to the policy to protect, and to protect transgender youth students. Let me rephrase that. She's in opposition to the policy and wants to protect transgender students, and also to keep transparency in the investigations. Emily Comras is in support of School Board Policy 5.08. And finally, Nico Hankins is in opposition to the bathroom policy. And that concludes those cards, thank you.
All right, at this time, we will move on for, to our designated parent organizations. I think I saw Mr. Hawke, is he here? From, I thought I saw you. Mr. Hawke from our District Advisory Council, she, who is our District Advisory Council Chairman.
Good evening. Good evening to Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent. During our last meeting, I was asked to come here today to read a resolution. And as the resolution was being voted on, in the timeframe that I said that we would, you know, read it, I said, well, things seem to be moving pretty fast, what if? And the members of the District Advisory Council basically said, there is no way, there's no way possible that any kind of decision would be made concerning the superintendent before the upcoming board meeting. So, we were wrong. And I will read the resolution, because we were in support of Dr. Green. But I guess to a certain degree, it might be mute. But I do know that the number eight is a number of new beginnings, and you got eight days, and you still got supporters. Duval County Public School District Advisory Council, resolution, continue support for the current DCPS Superintendent, Dr. Diana Green, State of Florida, County Duval. Whereas, Dr. Green was hired by the Duval County Public School System in 2018 in large part to stabilize the district's budget, create a visible and sustainable funding source to support an aging and fragile school infrastructure, and to improve the lowest-performing quartile of schools in FSA, reading and writing to a top quartile by 2026, ensuring that DCPS is recognized as a high-performing district by earning an A, B, or C with a baseline of 96% by 2026. Two, create high-performing career technical education programs. And whereas, Dr. Green is trending favorably and was scored by the Duval County Public School Board as effective for her leadership and performance in improving the bottom quartile of schools on her most recent superintendent evaluation. And whereas, Dr. Green continues to trend favorably and is on pace to meet and exceed the targets to ensure that DCPS will be recognized as being high-performing with a percentage of district operating schools earning an A, B, or C to a 96% baseline by 2026. And whereas, Dr. Green has eliminated all F-graded traditional schools within the DCPS and increased the ratio of schools rating C or better to 93%. And whereas, Dr. Green has led the DCPS to a 10% increase in the number of high-performing career technical education programs, with said programs moving from one performance progression level to the next. And whereas, Dr. Green continues to lead the district by demonstrating improvement in grades and student performance despite residual impact from COVID-19, as well as federal and state education program policy pressures. And whereas, Dr. Green has led the effort that has resulted in all impacted schools emerging from state oversight. And whereas, Dr. Green has led the implementation, innovation, program partnerships, and curriculum to include the early adoption of the best standards to address literacy and learning loss associated with COVID-19. And whereas, Dr. Green demonstrated bold leadership and foresight in the recommendations and campaign of the one-mill property tax referendum to support teachers, staff, arts, and athletic programs in DCPS. And whereas, Dr. Green led the strategy rollout of the critical ESER, that is, Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funding, to address student learning loss due to COVID-19. Whereas, Dr. Green has led a successful communication recommendation campaign and implementation of the half-cent sales tax to continue oversight of the management and guidance of the Master Facility Plan Oversight Committee with dashboard communications to ensure transparency and confidence in the district's use of taxpayers' dollars. Whereas, Dr. Green has earnestly tried to ensure that taxpayers' revenue generated from the half-cent referendum is allocated and distributed in accordance with the prescribed plan for distribution originally communicated to the voters, and has been equally forthright with any and all deviations from those plans. And whereas, Dr. Green led the development and enhancement of several career and technical education programs, including the creation of the Duval Ready Diploma Recognition Program from concept to deployment. And whereas, Dr. Green has led the effort to ensure that students and families can rest a bit easier through the ongoing evaluation and identification and procurement of additional safety resources for all DCPS schools, i.e., EVOL safety system, perimeter fencing, window safety film, additional entry points, additional access measures such as buzzards, to fortify the schools for students, staff, and administrators' safety. And whereas, Dr. Green was granted the collective support of the Duval County Public School Board in accordance with Board Policy 2.14, and as indicated by the effective performance rating received by Dr. Green on her most recent performance evaluation in November 2022, resulting in an extension of her employment contract and an 8.3% increase in her salary. Be it resolved that the members of the Duval County Public School District Advisory Council support with great fatality the continued work of Dr. Green, as well as her commitment to the overall success of Duval County Public Schools, the 20th largest district in the nation, fifth in the state of Florida. We look forward to, I believe, we've seen Board Member Joyce Willey, Hershey, Croker Daniels, I know we've seen our Board Member Jones, I believe we've seen Pierce, we have not seen you, Ms. April Carney, and we look forward to you being in our May meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawke. I'll now call for Kay Hawkins from PTA, Vasco Eagle from Title I, Erin Hutchinson from ESC Advisory Committee. Do not have any of those. I will now move on to comments from designated employee organizations. Terry Brady DTU, Elton Brown, President Afsmi, Jason Geiger, President JSA, Ronnie Burris, Business Manager, Lyona, David Bryant, President IBW. Is he here? Oh, I've got him, all right. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Welcome, good evening. David Bryant, President Assistant Business Manager of IBW Local 177 here in Jacksonville, represent the school maintenance employees, as well as school safety assistants, warehouse workers, and school safety systems people in this district. I'm here this evening because I'm pretty upset. Now, we're concerned about a proposal that's on the agenda tonight concerning an amendment to the custodial management contract, RFP number 13-21/TW, that will allow HES facilities to hire and manager and manage four plumbing positions. That's Agenda Item Number 20. In the Agenda Item Survey, and this is what has me so upset this evening, in the Agenda Item Survey, IBW is identified as a major impediment to hiring in short-staffed areas. Please allow me to read you that part. Our district believes one major impediment to hiring in short-staffed areas is wages, and have attempted to negotiate with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, who represent maintenance workers, to raise starting salaries for select trades. However, IBW has apparently demanded that all IBW employees' wages must be raised if any starting wages are raised, which generates a $4.4 million cost increase, assuming a 30% wage increase. I don't know who has been, or who has put together these numbers, but I don't ever remember my bargaining unit or any of my team, negotiating team, asking for a 30% raise. That has never happened. Whoever has put this together, that is a lie. Straightforward. Now, if you please see the handout I provided, you'll see what I mean by the, why I want all, and we want all, wages raised. On the front page, the first page of the handout, that is all of the On the front page, the first page of the handout, that is all of the open positions as of yesterday in my bargaining unit. Okay? That spans all pay bands that we negotiate for. That's not any individual. We want to fill them all. IBW wants all of those positions filled. That's why we advocate to raise the bargaining unit's pay. Furthermore, the district hasn't presented any proposal offering more money to address a particular shortage in any position since I've been representing this unit. Our CBA allows for the district to start HR mechanics, HR technicians, electricians, and plumbers at $22 per hour. We tried to negotiate plumber and electrician technicians into that, but it was rejected. Recently, a station manager hired a new plumber at $22 an hour, as per the CBA. When the employee's first paycheck came, he was not getting what he was told but the bottom of the pay band rate. When we inquired, the reason was given that HR had not authorized that position to start at $22 an hour. It was negotiated. It's in the CBA, but not authorized. The discrepancy was rectified, and the employee got what he was promised. But if it's in the CBA, why isn't it authorized? The unions offered a proposal to try to help in our last open contract negotiation, and that's the second page of your handout there, which is taken from the union's proposal dated September 22, 2022, in the highlighted part there. The district may, at its discretion, offer potential employees more than the minimum pay band as starting pay so long as the least senior person in the job classification is being paid at least 5% over the offered pay. Now, that 5% is also in our collective bargaining agreement. Once a new employee is out of their probationary period, they get a 5% bump. Okay? That's why we asked for that. It doesn't seem like an impediment to me. Does it to you? Is that a demand? No. It's a union identifying a situation and trying to offer a solution which empowers the district and this board to address individual shortages in specific areas, exactly what they have said we don't do and aren't doing. The proposal was firmly rejected and not asked. It wasn't even brought up past the first negotiating meeting. It was flatly rejected. Now, I'd like to address what's in this proposal. They're proposing to you an expenditure of $382,214.12 for four plumbers for a year of plumbing service. That works out to $95,000, over $95,000 per person per year. That's over market rate, which we've talked about market rate in here before. That's way over market rate. For that amount, the district should expect turnkey service. Have you noticed in the proposal, I don't know if you've read it, but these plumbers will be using DCPS vehicles fueled and maintained by DCPS. The district will provide tools and equipment for these people. The district will reimburse the contractor for materials used with a 20% cap on the markup, markup on materials. The district will reimburse the contractor for overtime and after-hours callouts. The district will be taking a large majority of overhead costs away from the contractor, and the contractor will provide employees a higher pay rate and a healthy profit margin. $382,214 for four plumbers. The real kicker to us is only one of those plumbers has to have a license. Yet, the other three don't have to. All of the plumbers in our bargaining unit have to be licensed. We have the plumber technician. They don't have to be licensed, but they have to be able to pass and obtain a Duval County Plumbing License, Electrical, or HR, whichever trade they are in, within five years of taking their position. Markup on materials, profit, you're not even getting good value for that money. If you were to put that same amount into leveling the playing field between our pay bands and private sector market rates, you get far better value. Every time we go to the bargaining table, we're told that there's not enough money for that. I'd like to talk about what this proposal actually is, in our opinion. An unfair labor practice, a perk violation. Article III of our current collective bargaining agreement identifies the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local Union 177 as the exclusive bargaining representative for the maintenance bargaining unit. With approval of this proposal, Duval County Public Schools is negotiating terms and conditions of employment around the collective bargaining agreement and the negotiating process. The district is not bargaining in good faith and causing harm to our bargaining unit. The district has the tools in the CBA. The union has offered relief. The district refuses to use the tools or negotiate and then calls the union an impediment. This is shameful and damaging to the relationship between IBW and Duval County Public Schools. I implore you to vote this proposal down, and let's talk about solutions and better ways to spend our taxpayers' money. Thank you for your attention, and I'll be waiting to hear from y'all.
Thank you. We are now going to move on to approval of the minutes. The Duval County School Board approved the minutes for the following meetings listed in the Agenda Item. April 4, 2023, regular board meeting. April 6, 2023, joint meeting, Jacksonville Public Education Fund, Duval County School Board members. April 11, 2023, board workshop. April 12, Policy Handbook Review Committee Meeting. April 12, 2023, special board meeting, student expulsion. April 18, 2023, board workshop. April 18, 2023, Agenda Committee Meeting. April 26, special board meeting, item added. I ask for a motion.
So move.
I have a motion by Board Member Hershey and a second by Board Member Willie. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for your vote. Hand vote for April Carney. That item passes 7-0. We'll now move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items to place on the consent agenda or items for discussion? Vice Chair Pearson?
Well, I believe the item that we were just discussing was 19 and not 20, and I would like to table that item for, to get more information. So I would like to not vote on that item tonight.
All right. So I have a motion on the floor to table an item. I would need a second for that.
Second.
Okay, I have a second. My understanding would be there's no discussion. We would just table the item for the time being. And then, do we have table for a date certain? Can I go back and ask for that or no? Just table in a definite?
It does not have to be for a date certain.
Okay.
A date certain would be the next board meeting.
Fair. I just thought it would give us a, yeah. So again, I have a motion to table item number 19 until the next board meeting. Do I still have a second? I have a second for Board Member Hershey. That being said, I'll call for your vote.
Just to clarify, vote on the motion to table?
To table, correct. We're having a technical item, so just hold tight.
Chairman, we can do a hand vote for Board Member Carney.
Board Member Carney, can you signal by saying aye?
Aye to table.
Okay. She's an aye to table. I'm going to now move back to the original item as posed, which is are there any items to place on the consent or agenda items for discussion? I'll ask for a motion.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Board Member Hershey, a second by Board Member Jones. Any further discussion at this time? Seeing none, I call for your vote. We'll go ahead and move on to our discussion item. We have one item pulled for discussion this evening, Academic Services Amendment to the Agreement with Varsity Tutors for Schools LLC. Dr. Green, I'll ask you to read your recommendation.
That the Duval County School Board approve an amendment to the agreement with Varsity Tutors for Schools LLC for an amount not to exceed $1.8 million. That the Duval County School Board authorize the board chairman or vice chairman and the superintendent to execute the agreement contingent upon form approval by the Office of General Counsel.
I ask for a motion.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Board Member Hershey, a second by Board Member Carney. And I will say, I pulled this item for discussion. I happened to end up in a conversation with a group of high school principals who talked about with Varsity Tutors that when students were logging on, there were items happening such as no tutor would show up or they would log on and it would be a group, a small group instead of the one-to-one we expected. Or it was a scenario where they would show a video-recorded lesson to the student instead of that live one-on-one. Given the $1.8 million that's here, because it's a significant contract, and again, great work on behalf of the district and nothing there, my concern was I didn't want to pay for services that we weren't receiving. I did have the opportunity to speak to Mr. Wright, and there are some systems I thought it would be helpful for the board to be aware of as it relates to this contract. The more and more of these types of contracts we do with this one-to-one virtual tutoring, I just don't want to pay for services that aren't received. So Dr. Green or Mr. Wright, whichever would like to talk about how we make sure we don't pay for those services.
Sure. Thank you for the questions. The initial launch of the Varsity Tutors in early March, there was a challenge in Varsity Tutors pairing the number of one-on-one tutors for the number of students we had assigned or identified in need of the tutoring. Part of that challenge was that we forced the tutoring to take place in our alternating A/B schedule. So it was a rotating schedule for the tutors to happen during class time on the high school schedule. And to assist with providing or to allow for all the identified students to receive services, we decided to allow for small groups to occur. However, we are charged differently for small groups. One-on-one tutoring is at a cost of $55 per hour. A tutor servicing up to five students in a small group is charged at $120 per hour, which equates to roughly $24 per student if you have five students in that small group. So the cost of the small group is less than the one-on-one tutoring. In regards to the comments around the videos, Varsity Tutors and their platform gave us access to an online ACT class and SAT prep class. That was just supplemental materials. That was not in place of the tutors. So students were able to participate in those virtual classes at times that they were not receiving the one-on-one tutoring and we were not charged for or will not be charged for accessing those courses. That was just supplemental courses provided by the vendor. We do have weekly meetings, and there are opportunities where we go through and review all the tutoring notes. Each tutor makes notes that the Varsity Tutor Team can see and share with us and can track the login, log-out times and view the recordings of the tutoring that takes place to allow for monitoring. Anytime, there have been a number of occasions, a small number of occasions, where a tutor did not show up. When that is identified, we're not charged for that tutoring time, and Varsity Tutors makes corrections and makes tutor changes as needed when that's brought to their attention.
And then, you mentioned one of the other things that came up in our conversation. And again, we're just doing more and more of these types of contracts, and I think we need to be paying attention to the small details in regards to it doesn't always go just perfectly, and that's okay. We just need to watch it. We also, in terms of penalty, because we do have students that don't show up, so can you talk through what happens there? Because I didn't understand that from the board workshop, and I apologize for that.
Sure. Moving into our next phase, which begins in May, it's scheduled to begin May 15 in preparation for students to take the June 10 or July 15 ACT. We've identified students signed up for those assessments to receive tutoring up to those dates. And since it will lead into the summer and it will be more difficult for us to track attendance because it's not happening during the school day, we have established a system of weekly reports. And anytime a student does not show up for the tutoring session without notification to Varsity Tutors, they'll be given an email to the student and contact made to inform them that if you are a not, if you no-show without informing the tutor, then they would no longer be continuing. The official language in the agreement is that if a student does not or parent participant does not provide 48 hours' notice that I'm not going to be there, then we would be charged. So to reduce and encourage students to notify when they're not going to show, we've established that, and we'll communicate that to the participating students in the next phase.
So my question is, next year, we're always looking for metrics to decide what to do the next year. If we have this contract come back to us next year, will we be able to see how many ended up being on one-to-one, how many ended up being group, how many were no-shows so that we can get a better feel for the usage of this item?
Yeah, absolutely. That will be able to be provided.
And thank you again for your work in regards to making sure that the money doesn't just go without some type of verification. Any other questions for other board members? Seeing none, I'll call for your vote. That item passes seven zero. We'll now move on to the next item, item number 20 on our discussion agenda. The Chief of Staff, Public Hearing and Vote, Revisions to Chapter Four Board Policies. Dr. Green, could you read our, the recommendation?
That the Duval County School Board conduct a public hearing and adopt the following recommended revisions to the following policy in School Board Manual, Chapter Four. Policy 4.90, Graduation Requirements.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing. If there is anyone who wishes to speak, if you would please move over to the side podium area, and you will have two minutes in accordance with this evening's time speaking. And I'm not seeing anyone moving over. We do have someone. Two minutes, yeah, two minutes.
Okay. My name is Jack Huang. I, I'm just curious, whenever you vote for the previous item, is there any public comment section, session for that? So, because I have like some kind of question for that, like say, how do you, if you have tutors, the county's been $1.8 million. Is there any way to assess, like, how effective this kind of like program is? So, like, that's kind of my concern. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask for a motion.
So move.
I have a motion by Board Member Hershey, Hershey, and a second by Board Member Jones. Any discussion? That item passes seven zero. We'll now move on to our next item. Chief of Staff, Public Hearing and Vote, Revisions to Chapter Five Board Policies. Dr. Green, can you read your recommendation?
That the Duval County School Board conduct a public hearing and adopt the recommended revisions to the following policies in School Board Manual, Chapter Five. Policy 5.08, Bathrooms, Locker Rooms, and Overnight Trips. Policy 5.45, Acceleration Program Access. Policy 5.72, Student Data Privacy Protection, Online Educational Services.
At this time, I'm opening the public hearing. If there is anyone that wishes to speak to this item, again, you'll have two minutes each. And we have Tracy, Dr. Pierce over on the side assisting us with bringing you up to
Hello again, Dan Merkin. Public, my address is on file. Just wanted to speak specifically to this particular policy. First, I wanted to say that there's nothing in law that necessitates any sort of change like this at this time. Your action is yours alone. So if you do this, be clear that you are singling out transgender students and going to force them to have, to use restrooms, either if they're able to access them, the single gender restrooms, or they're, they might be, you know, they're going to have to use restrooms that don't align with their gender identity. So what's that going to look like? Well, you're going to have some young people who are transgender, who are in transition, and they are, for all intents and purposes, to their classmates and going to be known as female. And they're going to be forced to use the male restroom. And that's going to cause all sorts of problems. Bigger problems than the ones this policy is supposedly trying to prevent, because we know those young people are going to get bullied and harassed even more than they already are. We know that transgender young people, and transgender people in general, already have more targets put on them when they use the restroom, if they're forced to use restrooms that don't align with how they present. And that's the key thing. How do people see these young people? And if they're seen as male, then they should be able to use the male restroom. And if they're seen as female, then they should be able to use the female restroom. And that's really where it comes down to. And the person that should make that choice is the young person themselves, because they know their identity and where they should be. So, don't pass this policy. It's just going to harm young people, and I know that this Board doesn't want to hurt young people. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have the next speaker. If you'll come up and state your name for the record.
Dr. Jennifer Coward. I'm here in asking you to vote no on 5.08, the bathroom bill. Again, sexual assault is already illegal and against policy, and has punishments in place. Students may be non-traditional in their gender appearance. We don't want to be asking for more policing of their bodies, for policing of who goes in which bathroom, who enforces this rule. We're going to create more and more adult interference and intervention in these kids' lives. A bathroom bill such as this would not have prevented the situation at DA, or situations just like it, that we need investigation on. I think this is a distraction from the serious scandal our district is facing. I think we need to be investigating the DA scandal and not coming up here and discriminating against a minority population who's already experiencing bullying and harassment at high rates. I would ask you to vote no. There's nothing in medical evidence that asks for this. There are medical, many mainstream medical associations who oppose this kind of rule, who support these, these students in their gender expression, who are happy to help them in the best of medical evidence. Targeting them, discriminating against them, policing which bathroom they go into is not going to be helpful, and instead is going to be harmful. We all are here because we want to keep students safe. This bill does nothing to keep students safe, and in fact, does the opposite. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have our next speaker. If you'll come up and state your name for the record.
My name is Ivy Suter. I urge the Board to vote yes on Policy 5.08, which is a common sense policy for bathroom use in the school district. This policy is a practice that has been in place for decades across the country. It's a practice all of us participated in. It's just nonsensical to be spending this much time on something that is such common sense. As a Board, I would recommend you need to pass this, and you need to get back to basics of academic achievement and excellence, because a literacy rate of 50% is not acceptable. So get this done and apply some common sense across the Board, please. And thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. We'll now have our next speaker.
Hello, Melissa Bernhardt. I'd like you to vote yes on Policy 5.08. We're talking about bullying and empathy. We want to make sure that these students that are associating themselves with being transgender, that we have empathetic approaches towards them. But what about the empathy to the girl that's in the bathroom? Does her consideration go out the window because somebody else decides theirs is more important? Have we not considered the girls that don't want a boy in the bathroom? Where is the respect for the women? Where is the respect for the girls? I understand that it's about bullying, and the LGBTQ community does not want to be bullied, and I respect that. But it does not mean that the girls get to be bullied in place of the situation. Girls do not want to be in the bathroom, whether they are little kids, or teenagers, or young adults, with boys walking around, whether they're wearing a dress or not, if they haven't Adam's apple. If you go into the bathroom, you know when you're around a man. Now, even with a swimmer, an Olympic swimmer, we can tell we're dealing with a male. We can tell. We know. It's uncomfortable. Why are girls the ones that have to settle? Why are we the ones that have to change how we feel, change what we're doing? Where is the empathy? Because we are being bullied, not just the children, but adults as a nation. I am a grown woman, and I'm being bullied to accept something that I do not agree with. I, I don't hate anybody. I'm not here to fight with anybody. I'm not here to bully back. But we need to protect these children. These girls need our protection. Please vote yes.
Thank you. We'll now have our next speaker. And again, state your name for the record.
Yes, hi, I'm Pat Villa, and I'm also RN with a BS degree. And I noticed that a lot of people that come up here give a long list of degrees and accomplishments that they have, to kind of coerce you to believing that what they, that the knowledge that they have is acceptable. And while the one, one person stated that the chromosomes XX and XY, sometimes they, a baby, a child is born with different chromosomes. Well, those are medical, actual medical issues that occur at birth. So, in that situation, then, that's a different situation. We're not, we're talking about people who are later in life thinking that maybe they are not the gender that they were born with. And so then, we are now obligated to set this party aside, this group aside, and with special treatments. And the word bullying keeps coming up. And, and many times before I've talked about bullying, there's many children who are bullied because of their looks, their level of poverty, possibly their mental status, the clothes they wear. We should not be catering just to the LGBTQ group for bullying. They use that term over and over and over again, that that's the main problem, that they're being bullied. There's plenty of other people that are being bullied, including the women in the girls' bathrooms, that are being subject to the boys coming in. Are, are girls going in the boys' bathrooms and shower locker rooms? I mean, that's, I haven't heard anything like that. I mean, like, so what's going on with that? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have our next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Varda. I'm a proud parent of two children who graduated from DCPS, one from Stanton and one from DA. I'm also an attorney. And since I'm an attorney, I'm going to come and talk to you a little bit about evidence, because I always think that you need to really understand what the evidence is. One very important factor you should know is that in the last three years, the number of emergency room visits for psychiatric issues among the LGBTQ community has tripled. So think about that for a minute, tripled. That includes our trans students. They're often bullied. I know they're talking about the girls being bullied in the bathroom by the boys. That hasn't been the policy up till now, that, that you, you've been able to go to the bathroom of the, the gender that you identify with. There hasn't been a problem. There hasn't been an issue. Nobody's being bullied like that. But guess what? When a trans woman has to go into a boy's bathroom, I'm guaranteeing there's going to be bullying going on. There's going to be a lot of horrible things that happened, that happened to these people. We really need to protect our students. We need to really think about our trans students. We need to look at the fact that this is all coming from a group that's pushing a political agenda. They're not thinking about our students, and caring about our students, and worrying about their mental health. This is not an issue. So I'm encouraging you to vote no to this new policy. From a legal perspective, there's absolutely no reason to do it. None. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll now welcome our next speaker to the podium.
Hi, Gamble Scott. There are a few things that our children do need protection from. Just a couple of them off the top of my head. Active shooters and sexual assault. I think we can all agree with that. This bathroom bill is shameful, embarrassing, and disgusting. As I mentioned in my comments earlier, transgender individuals are not predators. And there have not been any issues. There are not innocent girls cowering in a bathroom stall because there's somebody in the stall. Go into the bathroom and do your thing, and go out of the bathroom. Nobody's hurting anybody else here. But guns are hurting and killing our students. I didn't hear anybody in Tallahassee, a lot of the people speaking up today, I didn't see anybody up there speaking out against removing background checks and training requirements for people to walk around with a gun, but that's all good. Just, let's make a policy for something that doesn't even need to exist, for a problem that isn't even there. This is hateful and is shameful. So please do the right thing and vote no on the policy tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have our next speaker.
My name is Melody Bolduc. I would like to express support and also encourage support from the Board for 5.08. I would particularly like to support the call for explicit parent permission when children will not be separated by biological sex for overnight events. Dr. Green, when we spoke at the town meeting at Mandarin Oaks earlier this year, I addressed you specifically with concerns about the LGBTQ support guide that so many of our counties in Florida are using, specifically to the statement in the guide that parents would not be alerted if their children were experiencing confusion or questions regarding their gender identity under the assumption that speaking to parents may put a student in harm's way. And you expressed to me that student safety is the most important priority, whether or not there was a history of abuse or violence with those parents. There is no one more qualified or more interested in a student's safety than those students' parents. Parents have ultimate responsibility, and they need transparency, and should not be denied authority to make those decisions. Parents should absolutely know if their children are in an unsafe situation, meaning biological boys and girls, and girls and boys, bathrooms, locker rooms, and overnight situations. The incidence of suicide for gender-confused students goes up after they transition. So I just want to point out that we need to go for the root and stop the silliness with affirming an alternate gender choice. There are many people who've come out as people who, who transitioned, and then came back and said, "I wanted to kill myself even more after I transitioned." We need to stop encouraging that as a solution, rather than dealing with the psychological harm. So a vote for 5.08 is a vote for student safety. Please support 5.08.
We'll now have our next speaker. If you'll come to the podium. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Chaplain Jerry Woodham. I am in favor of the bathroom and locker room. I'm in favor because they talk about the LGBT. Every student these days hears about the LGBT. But what about the other kids that don't feel safe? They're not going to talk about it because they're afraid. You have been elected, each one of you have been elected by parents and grandparents to represent and make decisions for our students. I had three children in Duval County School System. I had two grandchildren up until this past year. We are concerned, as parents, as grandparents, that children need to be protected. We hear about the protections for LGBT, but what about the other children? God bless you and take care.
Thank you. We'll now have our next speaker move to the podium.
Good evening. I too agree with the bill to separate the school, the restrooms. I too have grandchildren, great-grandchildren in public schools. And I do not want my seven-year-old female in a restroom with a male. No. And I know the Creator, who created us all, He made us. And you come out of your mama's vagina with either a split or stick. And you choose anything else. I chose to have my hair red. It's a choice. But I can't inflict it on you to be red, because I like red. And neither can you inflict anybody else's choice of what they want to be on my children. Don't you dare. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have our next, the next speaker. We'll now have our next, the next speaker.
Thank you.
My name is Kathleen Murray, and I don't know how I can possibly follow our last speaker.
Thank you.
That's a tough act.
Thank you.
As adults, we're responsible for protecting our children. And there are people in the room here tonight that believe that children, and they've stated so, know who they are and what they are. However, when my youngest was two years old, and this is a story you can all probably relate to, he thought he was Superman. And I thought it was really cute. I even allowed him to wear a Superman costume to church every Sunday because I just didn't want to fight him. However, it wasn't so funny when he jumped off the bleachers thinking that he could fly as Superman and he broke his foot. As a parent, I was negligent in correcting him that, yeah, well, the suit is cool. You are not Superman and you cannot fly. He outgrew that and then he became Indiana Jones, which was a little bit safer. Even further back in history, when I was nine years old, and I'm 60, I identified as a Harlem Globetrotter. And for Christmas, I asked my mother for a red, white, and blue basketball. And every morning, I'd throw pebbles at my friend's window across the street and she'd get up at 6:00 and we'd dribble up and down the street of Fort Lauderdale, you know, singing, "Chicka Chicka Boom, Globetrotters," and we'd do our little stuff, right? By the time I was 10 years old, I realized I was not Meadowlark Lemon and I would never be Meadowlark Lemon. I was short, I was white, and I was a female. I outgrew that. Our children don't know who or what they are until much older. And there's a reason why insurance companies have such high rates for boys until the age of 25, because their brains are still growing. It's our duty to protect our children as parents and as, as members of the school board. So please, support policy 5.08 and protect the students of Duval. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sharman Smith. I'm a Fletcher parent, and I am aware of a predator technique where they falsely accuse innocent people of the things they're doing to distract you from what is going on. And I'm very aware that what is happening here is an attack on a targeted group of people that have the inability to protect themselves. I'm aware that transgender children who transition, 80% of the time are girls transitioning to boys because it is much easier to move through the world as a boy who is never expected to grow up or held accountable for their behaviors. And it is a terrifying reality. But the truth is, the bad stories I've heard that have come out of Fletcher bathrooms have all been between straight kids acting inappropriately, and that's why the school removed their bathroom stalls. We have a much bigger problem than just transgender children, and it needs to be addressed with the way boys are allowed to behave and get away with inappropriate behavior. We are grooming them to think that rape jokes are funny and that they can continue to sexually harass women and get away with it because they're boys. The girls are scared. We don't like it. The parents are scared and we don't know how to deal with it. And it's going to have to be a community effort where we actually address the common tactics that predators use to take the heat off of themselves. Our LGBTQ community is constantly attacked because they lack the ability to defend themselves. That's why, that's why victims of sexual assault are such easy targets. It is easy to slut shame and victim blame somebody into silence. And these kids are desperately asking to be heard and we should listen to them. This is about more than just what gender they feel like they are this week. This is about how much easier it is to move through the world as a man who is constantly protected by other men when women are shamed. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have our next speaker.
I really didn't want to share this because it's private, but I want to offer a rebuttal from something that somebody said earlier, that there aren't girls cowering in the bathroom. I can tell you that they are because one of them is mine. My daughter saw a penis in a bathroom at school and it changed how she went to the bathroom after that. And you can apply consequences and accountability and investigation and all those good things, but at the end of the day, if you provide a safe structure, you don't have to worry about accountability on the backend. You don't have to worry about investigations. You don't have to change things. It's simple and it's just wrong to not protect her with as much grace and strength as it is everybody else. So I'm here to advocate, it does happen. Girls cower in the bathroom. It changes how they use the restroom. They don't want to go alone. They want to go in pairs. And this was at age 11. So again, it does happen. It happened to me. It's happening a lot. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. We'll now have our last speaker, it looks like.
Hello, Justin Kugler again. I have to say, you know, that as someone that grew up in an LGBT family and grew up to have, you know, a, you know, heteronormative, you know, cis marriage with two kids of my own, it is incredibly frustrating and incredibly disappointing to hear the transphobic and LGBTQ-phobic comments that I've heard tonight. They're just not true. And I, and I say this as someone who has, you know, gone through a lot of stuff myself. I, I myself was a, was a victim of sexual assault when, when I was a young man. And it was my LGBTQ friends and family who came to my defense, who came to my support because people don't want to hear that these things happen to, you know, cis white men like, like myself. It was my LGBTQ friends that came to my support when my car broke down in the parking lot and 10 other people walked past me. It has always been my friends and family who have suffered persecution at the hands of people who do not understand and do not want to understand what they go through, that have always been my staunchest allies. And so to hear these people try to deny the reality of transgender people, to turn their backs on decades of science that shows what works best to keep people safe and to pretend that we have to sacrifice their safety and their ability to be true to themselves and who they are to protect other people, it, it is a false choice. And I ask all of you to reject that false choice and come up with something better. And this, this bill's just not it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'll close the public hearing. At this time, I'll ask for a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Board Member Carney and a second by Board Member Joyce. Is there, are there any board members who wish to speak to this item?
I'll say something.
Board Member Joyce.
Thank you. I just wanted to let the board know and the public know that as a board member, I have received complaints in my school of girls who were very, very distraught and distressed because of a transgender student in their, in their locker room. And those girls reached out to me. And so I, I just want the public to know that as a board member, this has happened in my district and I'm going to support this, this bill, I mean, this policy.
Any further discussion? Board Member Willie.
Yeah, I, I, I won't be supporting this. I think we're getting ahead of ourselves. I know at the state level, they have not submitted any sort of language for us on the local level. So I'd love to, to see that, if that's even a thing. Also, I, there's so much language that, that I've heard today that we have to, we have to do better by LGBTQ community. I, I just, I say that for myself and us as a board. We've, we've, there's a lot of places where I think we've gotten ahead of ourselves and even the state to try to, I guess, protect or where there's fear, whatever, whatever it is. And the other piece that I want to make mention of as well is, in that conversation that we had in workshop, I, I asked about, because one of the, the pieces is around the single use restrooms. And if we are going to create a policy like this, we have to understand what does that mean? How many single-use restrooms do we have in our schools? Like, are they actually available? Are they locked? Do I have to tell somebody that I'm going to that restroom? Because at this point, we have folks who have used affirming restrooms for years at this point. So now we are all of a sudden realizing that something is wrong. So now we have to also, we as a board need to take a look, who are those students? There's a population of students who this policy will directly affect once it goes into place. So what is going to happen with those individuals? Are they going to be displaced? Are they going to be bullied? So we, I think there's some things we have to think about before we actually put this into place. That's why I would be voting no tonight.
Any other discussion? Board Member Carney.
I'm very concerned about protecting our girls. Us as a district, we say that we, you know, we're for every student, every day. We are for all students. And we will be providing bathrooms that are a safe space for all students. I understand that we do need to do an audit of our single-use bathrooms, but they are available to be used. I think we as a board need to start being proactive, not reactive. And I think that there's been a lot more instances throughout the country of this happening. I mean, just a week ago in Wisconsin, an 18-year-old boy who said he was transgender walked into a locker room and exposed himself to multiple 14-year-old girls. This is not a minor that's walking into a, into a locker room and exposing himself to children. I'm very concerned about what could potentially happen, and we have a responsibility to be in front of that. And for that reason, I am supportive of this policy.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for your vote. That item passes five to two. At this time, we'll move on to the next item. Public hearing and vote, revisions to Chapter 7 Board Policy, that the Duval County School Board conduct a public hearing and adopt the recommended revisions to the following Board Policies in School Board Manual, Chapter 7. Policy 7.71, Conflict of Interest in Purchasing. Policy 7.72, Small Micro Business Enterprise Program and Minority Women Business Enterprise Certification. Policy 7.90, Risk Management Insurance. I'll open the public hearing at this time. If there is anyone who wishes to speak to this item, you should come to the side and Dr. Pierce will assist you. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. At this time, I'll ask for a motion.
Some move.
Second.
I have a motion by Board Member, Board Member Hershey and a second by Vice Chair Pearson. Are there any board members who wish to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll call for your vote. That item passes seven to zero. At this time, we'll move to the next item. Public hearing and vote, revisions to Chapter 8 Board Policy. At this time, Dr. Green, would you read, read your recommendation?
That the Duval County School Board conduct a public hearing and adopt the following policy in School Board Manual, Chapter 8. Policy 8.591, Naming or Renaming Facilities.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing. If there is anyone who wishes to speak to this item, please come to the side of the room and Dr. Pierce will be happy to assist you in coming to the podium. Seeing none, I'm going to close the, close the hearing at this time. At this time, I'll ask for a motion.
No approval.
Second.
I have a, a motion from Board Member Jones and a second from Board Member Joyce. Are there any board members who wish to speak to this item? Seeing none, I will call for your vote. That item passes seven to zero. Board Member Travel, that the Duval County School Board confirm that the travel listed is for the official business and that it complies with the rules of the State Board of Education. June 7th through the 9th, Tampa, Florida, Florida School Board Association, FSBA, Florida Association of District School Superintendent's FADS, Annual Summer Conference, Jones attending. At this time, I'll ask for, oh, at this time, I'll ask for a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion by Board Member Hershey and a second by Vice Chair Pearson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I call for your vote. That item passes seven, zero. Superintendent Travel, that item has been withdrawn. We'll move into for the record at this time, and I'll start on the end with, how about Board Member Joyce?
Sure. As I expressed in a, in the statement I issued last Friday, I'm disappointed that our constituents have had to wait more than a month to hear conversation among their elected representatives concerning what happened at DA. I am further disappointed by the context of our first discussion involving DA at 1:00 PM this afternoon, where the board was essentially presented a take it or leave it deal already signed by Dr. Green that foreclosed the opportunity for the board from an open dialogue about whether different, a different path to separation might have been more appropriate. That said, the board agreed to this, agreed to this this afternoon, of the terms of, agreed this afternoon to this, to only terms of separation presented to it. Of course, going forward, we have commissioned an investigation into the detail of who knew what and when. And I'm sure we all very much look forward to receiving the results of that investigation. However, regardless of whatever details regarding individual responsibilities are unearthed, and my personal preference regarding how we should have proceeded with making a clean break and a fresh start that might have served as the bomb of Gilead, I want to assure the city and especially the DA community that this board is committed to restoring trust and acting to prevent these horrors from being repeated.
Thank you. Board Member Willie.
I just want to use my comments to show my appreciation for Dr. Green. You're the only superintendent I've worked with as a board member and it's been an honor, a pleasure, like seeing you in formal settings and informal settings. Yeah. I went home today and pick up my girls and they were like, what happened? And I was like, it happened. And they were like, no, because they love you, Dr. Green. Just like many, many, many others love you as well. And I know that I'm, I'm just tired and I'm sure you are way more tired than I am. And Galatians 6:9 talks about, don't grow weary because you'll reap your harvest. And your harvest is already here and it's abound. I mean, all the things that you've been able to accomplish in your, in your tenure here, the list just keeps adding. I mean, Superintendent of the Year, National Finalist, the half penny, the mill, like the, the graduation rates. I can go on and on and I think, I want you, that's what I want you to sort of remember about your moments here. Because it has gotten very interesting in these past, past years, so, very interesting. But you have stood tall, you have stood the test, and I am better for having been a board member under, with you and working with you. So I just want to thank you and I wanted to use my time to tell you that. Thank you, Dr. Green, for all you've done for this city, the, the students in our district, and me as a person. Thank you, Dr. Green.
Board Member Hershey.
Thank you. Today was a hard day, but I think it was a day that we needed in order to make hard decisions. And I think there might be some more hard decisions moving forward. But I really think that as we work through this in the days ahead, that our district is going to be better. Dr. Green, you know how I feel. You saw my reaction when you shared with me your desire to retire. And I do appreciate the work that you've done. And having recently been to a Taylor Swift concert, I will say that I enjoyed fighting dragons with you and especially the separation from the city hall with our ability to hire our own outside legal counsel. That was a big battle and defined our independence from being under the, the thumb of the city council. And I will forever treasure my time with you and your leadership.
Board Member Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too just want to thank Dr. Green for her leadership, for her ability and desire to keep, first of all, our students safe during a pandemic when others said we should not impose a mask mandate. impose a mask mandate. She stood tall in spite of opposition, in spite of those who wanted to politicize that action. You did what was right in this, and you followed the science and not the politicians. We thank you for that. We also thank you for your leadership in making sure it protected our teachers from having to go before professional standards because they may have read a book that was not appropriate for that grade level. We wanted to make sure that the books were reviewed before anyone would be found in violation in a third-degree felony. We want to thank you for that. That took leadership. And because of that leadership, if they added another chapter to the book of Profiles in Courage, of Doing What's Right, in spite of, I think, they would have a chapter on you. And I just want to thank you for your leadership, your passion for our kids and doing what's right. Thank you.
Board Member Carney.
Today was a difficult day. This is something that I obviously did not think I was going to have to endure in the first six months of being a board member. I'd like to thank Dr. Green for welcoming me to the district. I know our time together has not been for very long, but I have appreciated working with you. And I applaud the Duval Work Ready Diploma. To me personally, is probably your shining moment for me, as I am such a huge supporter of career technical education. So I want to thank you for that. And I wish you peace going forward. I wish you a wonderful retirement and some good downtime to enjoy your family. And so thank you for your service. I do appreciate you. I also just wanted to shed some light on Douglas Anderson. I wanted to let the alumni know that you have my word, that we will be going forward with a very transparent investigation. However, I am concerned about the firm that's been chosen, Weiss-Serota, and the potential of a conflict of interest, and I'm hoping that we can have further discussion on that choice to make sure that we are, in fact, going forward with the right choice for an And, one more thing. I would also like to bring to the board a thought going forward, just to think about for the next workshop about, I'm going to ask you all to take a look at Florida Statute, Chapter 23 dot 127, in regards to a mutual aid agreement with the Jacksonville Sheriff's Office going forward and potentially entering it into an agreement with our sheriff to have our chief of school police reporting to the sheriff going forward, especially on a temporary basis until we figure out what the future of our leadership will be with the superintendent. That being said, again, I appreciate this board. We've had a lot of hard decisions to make in the last month, and I just want to let you all know that I appreciate you very much, and I am glad that we are able to get through difficult times together. Thank you.
Vice Chair Pearson.
In the spirit of pivot, I am going to talk about some happy things that are happening in the district because there's a lot going on in the district. I was able to attend jobs for JAGs, or jobs with JAGs, I think is what it was, sponsored by the Jaguars, and it was a program that invited potential or prospective Bright Futures recipients, high school students, to come to an event at the Jaguar Stadium and hear from front office staff, people who are doing the important work of making the Jaguars' organization run, who were Bright Futures recipients coming out of high school and have worked their way through college and different jobs that are now working for the Jaguars. And so they talked about their education and career journey. And then we got an after-hours tour of the facilities, even going into the owner's suite. It was all really impressive and a really cool program, and it was offered for free. They even fed the students. I would highly encourage parents of high school students who may have a student interested in sports marketing or sports management to look out for this program next year. We've already talked about Teacher Appreciation Week next week. Yesterday, I believe, was Principal Appreciation Day, so I would like to say to the principals of District 23, I am sorry that I did not get an email out yesterday appreciating you, but I do appreciate you. And also to the principals in Districts 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, and 7, I appreciate you as well. I want to give a shout out to Dupont Middle School. The Association of Teacher Educators Conference picks this school as a give-back school each year, and Dupont was chosen as the give-back school, and so all year, they were raising money. Dupont received a gift of $4,500 for their PBIS initiatives that they could use to enhance that program. And so that was a nice thing, so I want to say thank you to the Association of Teacher Educators Conference for doing that nice thing for Dupont. I got an email from a parent that was titled, "Positive News From Douglas Anderson." And she was going on and on and on about all the accolades that the band program has received, and I'll just share two of them. One is that the jazz band participated in the National Jazz Festival recently. They received first in the high school large ensemble with the outstanding musician being named Giovanni Martinez. And then they also received first in the high school small ensemble, superior musician Giovanni Martinez. The Wind Symphony got a gold rating at the World Band Festival, and that was performed at Carnegie Hall. So there's some really high-level things happening at DA. Students are performing at a very high level and succeeding amidst all that is going on. And I will also say as a personal note of thanks, I am participating in Leadership Jacksonville and the Class of 23, the best class. And we had our Arts and Culture Day on Thursday and spent quite a bit of time at Douglas Anderson, doing, students leading us around, showing us all of the art areas, all of the facilities. And then we were treated to a mini extravaganza performance with dancers, musicians, and others. And my classmates, who are emerging and top leaders in the city of Jacksonville, were thoroughly impressed with the students, with the facilities, with the faculty that they saw. So I think part of saying to DA that we see you is that we see all of you, and we acknowledge that there are some still very positive things happening at DA and letting those students shine as well, and teachers shine as well. I want to say congratulations to Sandalwood, being the gateway champions in baseball. They defeated Wolfson a couple of weeks ago, and I will happily say that that was a District III final, so I could personally not lose in that one. But it was nice to see those two programs do well. I want to say thank you to Courtney Wesley, who is a newer member of the DCPS staff. She's our Government Relations Liaison, and for the six weeks of session, she has been in Tallahassee on behalf of DCPS and on behalf of our board, keeping track of what's going on, meeting with staff, meeting with members, and lobbying on our behalf, working with other lobbyists from FSBA. And it is no small thing to leave your home and commute to be in Tallahassee for six weeks, to commit to do that. And it is no small thing to spend that much time in Tallahassee during session. It's pretty rough. And so I just want to say publicly thank you to Courtney for serving the board in that way. And lastly, I want to, again, celebrate the talented students that we saw tonight. We have a lot of talented students, high-achieving students in DCPS. To the Class of 23, I want to say good luck as they close out their high school careers. And to draw on a reference from my generation, may you finish most triumphantly.
Thank you. And I'll just close with what we opened with, which was a thank you to our teachers as we celebrate them during this time. To the teachers that I had the privilege of working with all those years, I am grateful for the time we spent together, for the teachers who show up every day, and our paraprofessionals who show up every day. Thank you for the work that you do. I will send a special thought to our high school teachers and principals and school leaders, particularly those working with our seniors right now, especially those seniors that are a little fragile and haven't quite crossed the finish line. But we know we have professionals out there that are doing their very best to make sure they become on-time grads. I say thank you and kudos to you for the hard work that you do. To Mr. Wright and his shop in particular, for the work that they do in regards to that as well, thank you to you. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. I have a motion from Board Member Joyce and a second from Vice Chair Pearson. All those in favor, signal by saying yea.
Yea.
Any opposed? That motion carries.[1731.38]